I hereby call to order this committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. The time is 8:01 a.m. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Amy Paling.
Here.
Johns, he's ready.
Here.
Ann Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Frank Panzico.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Here.
Erin Stone.
I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the December 5th, 2022 Committee of the Whole and Executive Session meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the Monday, December 5th Committee of the Whole and Executive Committee meeting minutes.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to minutes? Okay. May we...
Johns, he's ready?
Yes.
Ann Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Frank Panzico.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes.
Erin, Amy Paling.
Yes. Motion carries. So, we do not have any facility development items today, so we'll begin with school finance. Mr. Caesar, ready?
Thank you, President Paling. I'm looking over at the person who actually knows what's going on here. So, but I think we're talking about the student fees and a budget calendar resolution, and then the bond issuance that we've been talking about.
All right, thanks. All right, so each year, the board approves several different student fees. Today, we have a couple of different things we wanted to share with the board that we're looking for approval to come next Monday. The first item is the KEEP 39 program. The recommendation is to keep the hold the fees study again for the 23-24 school year. And the other item is relates to our summer programming. Kristin, do you want to share your thoughts?
Yeah, so last summer, we used some of our ESSER funds to offset the review and reinforcement tuition and had a larger participation based on that. And so, we would like to do that again this summer and see whether we continue to have that higher level of participation. We still have ESSER funds that we can utilize to offset that. We'd like to keep the enrichment fees the same, not change those at this point. And then, I think we'd like to do a slight increase to the transportation fees because they did not... That was the one area that really doesn't come close to breaking even. Any questions?
Yeah. Kelly, so how much is left in the ESSER? What's it cost?
So, we would be looking at spending about $27,000 to offset the fees for the review and reinforcement. So, those are the eligible students who demonstrate academic need. We still have about... I would have to look back through it, but we had an...
Want to get a sense?
Yeah.
And how many... What's the increment? Additional participants?
So, we went from about 38, 40% attendance of those students that were recommended in previous years was kind of the average up to, I think, 80% last year.
Wow.
So...
Holy smokes.
And we're not sure whether it was the change in fees or the fact that we were sort of coming off of COVID. So, we'd like to do another year of it and then be able to evaluate whether it... See if we continue to have that larger number of participants.
Yeah, money well spent. Yeah, I just want to reiterate that. I mean, I think annually, we've looked at how we can get those percentages up because once you identify someone that needs 40%, that's what they choose, but that's a much smaller number than we'd like. So, hopefully, they'll get in the pattern. Some of that probably was COVID. If it is fees, I think it's good worthwhile. If it's not fees, then we still need to keep working on that, obviously. But 80% is where we'd like it to be every year.
Right.
So, that's great. Thank you.
Have you seen a difference in the fall, or is that just too difficult to assess?
So, we have tried to sort of evaluate that, but it is... You have to pull out all of the individual students in order to look at their performance from spring to fall. So, we will continue to monitor that to see if we see any bump this year, but it is a tremendous data set that we have to sort of cull through in order to get that information.
Great. Everybody's... We're good?
Okay. The second item is...
All right. Can we talk about... So, we're good with that item. So, the KEEP... We're gonna try to keep the recommendations and make it the same. But if I recall correctly, since we've gotten feedback on this, we're gonna take a deep dive at some point.
Yeah. Yeah, the target is for next month, hopefully, we'll have everything ready. The idea would be that we would be able to share with the board what the exact costs were for all the construction for the four schools, and then look at the first couple of years of operation, see what the actual expenses were, what are the actual revenues. And that, at least from my perspective, should start to give us a feel for like where we're heading and, you know, at least give the board information on how long it might take to pay back. Thank you.
All right, I think we're done with that.
Okay. All right, so the second item is just the board... Next Monday, the board approving a resolution directing the administration to start working on the fiscal year '24 budget. So, included for the board members was the short resolution that the board will be asked to vote on, plus just kind of a calendar very similar to the previous years where, over the next several months, the administrative team will start to work on developing the budget, then come May and June, we'll have some first looks at it. And then, at our August 20... August board meeting is when we have the board approve... Hold a public hearing and approve the fiscal year '24 budget. So, kind of a procedural thing, but just wanted to let the board know that we'll be asking for that vote coming next Monday.
So, there's... I don't know. Is this the same pretty much as last year?
Yeah, very similar.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. There are no comments?
Okay. Then, the last thing is... So, yes, we have talked about the bond issuance that'll be needed to fund the construction projects this coming summer. One of the things that... This is a bit of a procedural step. For next Monday, the bond counsel and our bond advisor said that the board will need to pass a resolution of intent... Think of it, not necessarily... Next Monday's vote won't cover parameters, per se. It's more of like letting the public know, this is our intention coming forward. We're going to... We plan to issue bonds, and then to also hold a public hearing at that same board meeting. And then, come in February, we'll talk more about the parameters, and then at that February board meeting is when we would ask the board to approve the parameters of the issuance and the actual issuance, and then sometime shortly after that meeting is when the actual bond sale would occur. So, this upcoming Monday's board meeting is merely a resolution surrounding the intent, like letting people know that the board has intent to issue.
Okay. And then, there was something in your email, right? There was an analysis in the email that came to the board?
So, we will... I think at the February committee meeting, we'll talk about kind of the parameters, payback, issue... What it looks like to issue in the spring versus like maybe in March versus waiting until June, you know, additional costs versus additional interest revenue that we might earn on the issue, the proceeds.
Okay. Oh, to try to get a cost benefit at the longer term?
I think where we're at right now, just kind of having seen the interest rates that we can get on our liquid savings accounts ought to be very, very similar to what the interest cost will be.
Okay. That sounds like... That sounds really good. Frank, you had a point about interest and length of the bond, but I think this addresses...
Would that be at the next meeting, then? Yeah, that'll be something. We'll have lots of information updated. I actually communicated with Liz Hennessy last week, and she said, leading into that, I think it's on February 13th, we'll have all new information. So, that's still, you know, a few weeks away, but yeah, we'll have all that for the board to consider in February. And earlier, she thought that may even be advisable to do something in January, but I assume that that's not necessary, and the timing of these other meetings... Yeah, as we work through, January is just too soon. Yeah. So, that's fine. Okay. So, next committee of the whole meeting. Thank you.
That was quick. We're done.
All right. Terrific. Thank you. We'll move to strategy. Mrs. Schneider-Fabes.
Well, okay. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Kremis Goli for Goals 3 and 4 updates.
Absolutely. Thank you. We saved a lot of time so that we could talk about our strategic plan today. As the board knows, we're giving updates each committee of the whole meeting on various action steps, and so today, we will focus some time on Goal 3 and then also on Goal 4, specific to the 4th to 5th grade transition. So, I will first ask Dr. Glowacki to take over and provide a presentation on behalf of our team for Goal 3.
Good morning, everybody. Goal 3 is our professional community. Goal 3, professional community. Our goal is to foster a professional community that values, supports, develops, and retains highly effective staff. So, we have worked on our action steps that we set forth earlier this fall, and this is just a brief summary on where we're at to date. Katie Lee and I are the goal champions for this area, and she could not be here today, so I'm gonna try and do it justice without her. We've had a couple of our DSAT... We have DSAT meetings scheduled this year. It's year two of our DSAT. We met in early September, September 8th, to kind of review where we were at with our action steps before bringing them fully to the board. We will meet again February 16th and again twice in June to kind of wrap up and see where we're at with regard to our action steps and planning for future action steps as we move forward. Here's just a brief reminder of who is on the DSAT committee this year. Many are staff and community members and parents that have been with us since year one, and so they're staying on, which was our hope, so that we could gain some momentum in the process of planning and evaluating our work. The first action step that we want to talk about was to look for ways that our staff could come together, so not just within a school, but among schools. And so, here are a few pictures of things that we've been able to organize and plan for with the help of many administrators and staff members. Again, I'm just the reporter today. This is not all my work by any means. August Institute Day, we all had our Common Unity shirt. This year, the message was "I belong," and we're continuing to work on that theme and that message, but a way to bring us all together, and this visual on the left just captures that. We had an Institute Day on September 23rd, and those are the days where we look to try and bring staff together because we have everybody available to us at the same time. And so, we had an opportunity during lunch to have dueling pianists come, and they took requests from the staff, and we were all outside. It was actually kind of a chilly day. We thought, you know, it had been super hot up until that point, but of course, that was the first day of cool weather. It still worked. You can see from the pictures, staff were out there. It was a nice way to just kind of relax together, but still have some commonalities. We are looking at the February Institute Day, which is coming up right after Presidents' Day weekend, and there's going to be a trivia event happening during lunch on that day where our schools will be competing against each other as teams to see who is the smartest, or at least in terms of trivia. The one thing that there isn't a picture of that I just want to mention, grades 5 through 8 have really been creative in trying to find ways to bring the schools together. You might recall from previous conversations, having different schedules makes it difficult for the staff at those two schools to come together, meaning Junior High starts pretty early, High Crest is the latest start time, although we've done a really great job of trying to get those closer and closer. There's still a difference of a good half hour there. And so, having them come together for meetings or anything on a typical school day is very challenging. And so, at the start of this school year, we identified two days in which we would set aside Wednesday after-school meetings where High Crest staff and Junior High staff would come together. And the first one took place in December, and the topic of conversation was writing and how it impacts every content area and how different disciplines might use the writing elements that are taught within our ELA classes in their domains or their content areas. And so, it was the first, hopefully, of several more conversations. There's another one planned for May, I believe, this year, and then we'll talk about implementation in years ahead. But we're continuing to look for those opportunities, aside from the fun events as well. We... In December of 2021, we started taking purposeful interest in those staff members that are leaving us. Again, you've heard us talk about those exit interviews or Google Forms. We've given employees who are leaving two different ways essentially to give us feedback. The first would be, you know, through... Could be an anonymous survey, quite honestly, or an in-person exit interview with either Dr. Kremis Goli or myself, just really to elicit some feedback about, you know, what could we have done differently, perhaps? Essentially, is where we were going to maybe have changed the outcome for that staff member. And so, we have had about 38 staff members since December of '21 fill out the Google Form. We've had about five people request exit interviews in person. We asked the same questions essentially in both formats. It's just up to the comfort level of the person leaving us. And so, here is where we're at at this point. There's a liker at scale for some kind of basic, very basic questions. Do you enjoy working in District 39? Four being yes, love it absolutely the best, with one being not so much. So, the average is about 3.53. Did you have the correct or the needed initial training and induction as you started here? 2.68. Were you equipped with the tools, resources, and support to effectively do your job? 3.34. What is the culture? How would you describe the culture of District 39? 3.26. And did the evaluation that you received... So, all of our staff are evaluated. Did that evaluation feedback help you to improve in the work that you do? 3.03. So, again, we're aiming for that four. This is where we're at at this point. There was some open-ended questions as well because point scales can't tell us everything. And so, one of the questions that we asked is, what has been most satisfying or enjoyable in your work in District 39? And some of the highlights and themes were relationships with colleagues and students. The relationship piece came through over and over again, irrespective of position or why people were leaving. Clearly, the relationships, not only with students, but also with colleagues, really kind of is the selling feature for District 39 as our staff are reporting. There's significant opportunities for professional growth, and that is more than just PD. That includes continuing education through college tuition reimbursement. There's, you know, many avenues for continuing to gain skills and progress professionally, and many plentiful resources, I would say, are the themes. We also asked about challenging, like what is hard about working here? What's frustrating? What have you encountered? And some of the elements that came through is needing more support with challenging student behavior and skills and strategies to interact with parents and advocates who might be disrespectful or interact in a way that isn't as professional. And that's not something new. We've heard that in other reports, but having those strategies to be able to be effective in those situations. Sometimes, there's isolation. If you're in a role that is a singleton role, you don't always have another colleague that you feel that you can commiserate with, for lack of a better word. And I will note that the pay for paraprofessionals came up multiple times, but I'm gonna put a caveat on that. Some of this information was collected over the summer and early fall when we were in active negotiations. So, I'd be curious to see if that is a theme that continues, but I, in full disclosure, reporting that out. What could we have done to retain you? Some part-time options might have been helpful, as well as, again, better pay for paraprofessionals. So, that's what we're learning so far. In contrast to that information, Dr. Kremis Goli and I have started our pre-tenure focus groups that we had talked about conducting, and so we're just in the beginning phase of that. We met with High Crest last week, and we're continuing on with the other five schools all the way through early February. And it's an optional opportunity either before school or during lunch. We make it available at either of those times. And we have kind of a set of questions that align with the themes here to dig a little bit deeper, again, really trying to get at what might we be able to do better or differently to help you feel successful and want to stay in District 39. So, more to come in that, but that's the status update for where we're at.
So, there's a question.
Question. So, this was awesome. What are your takeaways in terms of what you think you need to do in response to this feedback?
So, I want to find out more information in these focus groups. So, compare what people are saying who are leaving us to those that are newer in their career with us. Are the same themes coming through? Because if they are, we have work to do. We may have work to do regardless, but I really want to hone in on where the ties might be between these two groups of staff. Not having that information yet, I think I really want to look at kind of that initial training, that induction, and also not just at the start of the year, but when we hire staff mid-year or at a different point when we're not doing all of our initial training, how are we supporting them as they come onboard? I think, even if I didn't have this data, I think that would tell me that we have some work to do in that area, especially... I think we do a good job New Teacher Week. There's a whole lot of training going on, but we hire staff more and more outside of that week, and what are we doing to support them as they come on?
I'll run that one. Just two other quick ones. I know you can break this down in lots of different ways and eventually becomes meaningless, but the two I was thinking of was like longer-term employees that leave versus shorter-term. Like, you know, if someone's been here 20 years, they may have a different attitude, good or bad, versus someone that was here, you know, three or five years, even reached tenure, but still was young in their career. I don't know if you... I'm able to break that out. And then, the other was the grade schools versus the collective schools. You know, the four grade schools versus... I don't know what the right word is for that.
Middle...
Five A. There we go.
And I think those are two really great ways to break it out. Another may be looking at specialists versus classroom teachers, so that may be another way to look at it. Right now, our N is relatively small because we just started this work, but I like those ideas, and maybe as we gather a bit more information, though we hope we're not gonna lose too many people as we cycle through this school year, as our N, as our group size gets a little bit bigger, breaking that down makes a lot of sense, and we may learn some things from that. So, thanks for that suggestion.
Yeah, 38 is kind of like the right in-between. It's like, it's a big number, but it's not so big that you couldn't do a little bit of trend. So, it's great to collect this kind of information. I mean, this is really important feedback.
Well, and I think too, to your point, right? Over time, then we'll be looking maybe at years. So, this includes from December of 2021 all the way till current, but maybe we break it out by school year. Different things happen every school year. So, the point is, we have this information, so as we start looking at it, I will make a note to make sure we have the different demographics that you noted so that we can start maybe sorting the data.
Yeah, if you're doing the collection, have a couple demographics.
Yeah.
You can go back later then if you want or have the time.
Exactly. Any other thoughts related to this action step? So, this next action step was really for us to be meaningful in our way that we're looking at how we're getting all of our voices and expertise represented in our decision-making structures. And so, we took this opportunity to look to see, you know, what committees exist, what opportunities exist for staff to make their needs and wants and desires known, especially as decisions are being made. So, here's a list of all of the district committees and opportunities that are currently at play. I'm not gonna read them all to you. There are several. I will say that MTSS has been a significant element in the work that we've done this year, as well as the facilitated IEP process and training, and we've heard from staff that that has definitely been opportunities for them to share in their thoughts and ideas about how to best proceed. We will be starting up the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Belonging Task Force in the next couple of weeks, and so that will be getting underway, and that'll be another opportunity to share input and ideas about moving forward. At the school level, there's, again, building MTSS, but also the Foundation's Behavior Team, and we've received a lot of positive feedback from staff about the training that they've received, and they're kind of on the cusp of being able to bring it into the schools. And so, that is an exciting point in the training, but it is a time commitment when they go through the training. It's two days every couple of months, and it's significant. But empowering is what I've heard from staff, so that has been a positive outcome as well. So, there's a lot happening. We've heard the strategic plan has brought a lot of initiatives and a lot of things that are new and up and running, and it's at times a bit tiring. And when we put the list together, we understood it a bit better. There is a lot going on. This next action step was about kind of addressing immediate, short-term needs of staff and trying to help them feel that their needs are being met as quickly as possible. And so, when we were creating this on the DSAT, some of the thoughts were like a little suggestion box, literally old-school with paper pencil cart, and an opportunity to offer ideas and suggestions to the building administration. That did not quite get legs as I talked more and more with the building principals, but they have been very purposeful in the restructuring of some of the existing things, such as the Principal Advisory Committee has been something that has been in place for years in our schools, but they've retooled it and restructured it in some of the schools so that it is more immediate in terms of response. You don't have to wait the entire month for the committee or the team to come back together. You can email directly the PAC representatives to the building principal and get some decisions and outcomes made more effectively. The thing that I really want to emphasize is that I... All of our building principals have taken this need and adapted it in a way that makes sense for their school and their staff, and they've talked to their staff about it, about this desire to meet their needs more immediately so that it can be resolved and not... People aren't waiting seemingly forever, and all of the principals have come up with a unique or different way to address that within their schools. So, I'll be curious to see if, in fact, it has felt the staff feel that their needs have been met more effectively. This next one is about meeting norms. We started this through our DSAT process. It has evolved a bit, and each school, I think, might have a little bit of a different version of these meeting norms. We have it on all of our meeting agendas. We review them, whether it's a district committee, an administrative committee, a staff meeting. This has become the norm to have team norms listed. It seems, again, perhaps rudimentary, but it isn't something that had been part of our practice, and it has become an important part as we've moved forward. Next action step is to talk about how do staff and administrators have the opportunity to identify what they want to learn about, what their professional learning needs are. And so, some things to note is that the district grade level or department meetings have a running agenda. Those meetings are led by teacher leaders, and they have an opportunity, they being anybody in that meeting, to identify what their needs are moving forward. So, we meet by at least five times throughout the year, and that's an opportunity to track and record any upcoming needs for professional development or training. Our school-based grade level meetings have been redesigned this year, so we took advantage of the contractual Wednesday meetings, if you will, and retooled them. We structured them with a different purpose, depending on where they fell on the calendar, so that hopefully, we could be looking at data when data's new, fresh, and available. And we could be looking at transitions when we were talking about upcoming transitions, either for students or like at the quarter, if students were transitioning to different teachers. It's an opportunity for us to take the time that we had, but refocus it for the ideas, the concepts, the needs at the moment. And that isn't something that we had... And that isn't something that we had done previously. Again, it seems kind of maybe, yeah, of course you should do that, but we, we hadn't done that and we were, it took a lot of energy and thought to redesign those. So I'll be, we'll be curious to see how it's received by staff and if it accomplished what we had set out to do, which is to be as useful as possible for everyone involved. Our paraprofessionals meet with the building administrators fairly regularly, whether it's at the quarter or on regular Fridays at the elementary level, but to really check in with them to see what their training needs may be. You'll recall from our negotiations that, that the paraprofessionals will participate in our Wednesday meetings next school year, not all of them, but many of them. And so as we design our Wednesday meetings for next school year, we will want to identify which ones those are and set training and professional development needs appropriately for everybody, including paraprofessionals who will be attending that. As of now, we only have like the first day before school starts. We have conference days. We have very few opportunities to connect with the paraprofessionals. So that will be another opportunity to be consistent in our approach throughout the course of the year. And then our last action step is to begin the process of focusing on culturally responsive teaching and cultural competencies for all instructional staff. And this is going to happen at the February Institute Day. We have a speaker, Katie left me notes, Dr. Rachel Batshu-Marmud, who will be, she's an equity consultant and a teacher trainer and the CEO of Equity Teacher Leader. And so she will be offering some initial training for all of our staff and then we'll be able to make decisions about where to go with that concept and support for our staff going forward. So that's Goal Three in a nutshell, at least to date. It will probably evolve as we continue through the course of the school year. Questions?
Well, first of all, this is just such important work. It's like our most important resource and so I appreciate all of these efforts. I think it's really exciting. The through line I hear is really respecting and maximizing people's time. So I'm sure that's appreciated. All of our staff's time is stretched so thin, so I think that'll make a big impact. I, just for my own education, you may have explained this before and I have forgotten, but the Foundation's Behavior Training in the teams, that sounds so important because I know teachers are, have expressed struggling with behavior in the schools. So can you just remind me like how many people at a school level that is? Because it sounds like an intensive training. And so then how do we, like how many people roughly is that? And then how do we plan to make sure there continue to be people trained year after year?
Kristen?
So each school has developed, has identified a Foundation's Building Team and it's about five or six members at the elementaries and more like seven or eight, nine at the five, eight campuses because they are larger. There's an administrator, sometimes two on the committees that are, are attending the trainings or sort of going back and forth between it. We have definitely looked at how we're making sure that we can support our buildings during our training times. In terms of subs, we've been trying to plan well in advance, trying to secure subs so that we, we can do this. I know that it's sometimes a stretch on the buildings, but I think that our teams and our teachers have been feeling like this is extremely valuable and is really going to have a long-term impact on our, our students and our, and our buildings. And so they're willing to sort of figure this out as we go through it.
That's right.
So it's the, it's the leadership team that is receiving this training, but a leadership team from each school that's been identified as kind of the, the leaders in their school in this regard. And I will say, it is really challenging to be out of your school, your, your work assignment for two days. And, and we hear from staff, if the training is not valuable, they start to kind of resist that, being out of their building. And in this case, we have had incredibly, just really positive attendance, people going above and beyond to make sure that they can attend the trainings and that the schools are covered in their absence, because again, substitutes are, can also be challenging. The board might recall, this is one of those time, one of these sessions we needed to up the rate for our subs to make sure that we were covering the buildings. And everyone felt like that was really a beneficial action to take in support of these teams. So you're right, that behavior and the social, emotional needs of our students has come up time and time again, especially since the pandemic. And this is one coordinated way in which we're trying to make sure that our schools are prepared to support that.
Right, thank you.
Right, did you have a question?
Yeah, just to throw out a comment, whatever. I think it's great work, so a very good report. I wanted to talk about one thing, that the committees, it looks like there's lots of opportunities for, for employees to get involved. One thing that occurred to me is that some committees, some career paths of, of teachers are, you know, someday I may want to be in administration, some, or in some cases, they're just informally kind of a building go-to person. And it looks like there's enough committees here that there might be some advantage for those type of people to steer them to a committee that might be more useful for that. You know, if there are going to be kind of an informal building go-to person, there might be some committees that are, all these committees are good, but there might be some that, that would help them grow in that way. And if they want to be an administrator, there's some committees that might help them grow in that way. And since there's so many committees here, a little bit of informal steering sometime can be helpful.
Absolutely. Other questions are coming?
I'll do one. This is awesome. What I love about this is it feels to me like really valuing the voice of staff and giving them all kinds of avenues, just kind of freeing up two-way communication, which is beautiful. And I bet you in two years, your, your exit surveys are going to be different as a result of that. This is just a real small micro question, just because I'm curious. So what is coming bubbling up to the surface from these principal advisory committees? Like what's an example of recommendations or things people, staff want to see?
Like I probably take that everything.
Talk about High Crest.
All sorts of things.
Really, we meet with our PAC teams about once a month and we have a, an agenda that's open to everybody on staff, just to put things on there. But our PAC is made up of representatives in, at High Crest at least, one from each house or one from each department, so depending on what it is. So they may go to their house meeting and have a conversation about the bathrooms and bathroom check-in, check-out, and can we improve that? Or it might be re-SAS, or it might be bringing things to ninth period creative arts class. There are too many kids are, you know, bringing too many things and, or leaving early. So it's a lot of the logistical, operational things that go on in the school, but we also try to develop some things that are culturally based too. So my PAC team worked together to support a Hawks' Day on our return from winter break. So it was something that we had done last year, but we worked and talked to our teams and is this something that we want to do and what do we want our focus to be? And how do we want to get to kids for that day? So, and it was really SEL-based and everybody agreed that it was a good, beneficial thing to do. So we worked together to have that happen. So it, it runs the gamut from operational to culture, school, climate and culture-based.
Awesome, thank you. The other thing I want to say is just as a school board member, having these groupings, I just feel like I'm learning so much and it's really helpful. And I know it's a lot of work for you guys, but like this is like epiphany after epiphany. I, I just wish that we'd started these years ago when I was a school board member. I think it's really helpful. Thank you. All right, so I know we have to go to Goal Four, but I'm excited to hear about that too.
Kelly Jackson will lead us through the review of Goal Four and the fourth, fifth grade transition updates where we've been putting in a lot of work and seeing some good outcomes as well.
Yes, so mine should be a little bit shorter, I think. It's just based on our action step for fourth to fifth grade transition and it falls under our Family Partnerships goal, of which Tony and I are the goal champions. The specific action step that I'll be talking about today is evaluate changes made to the fourth to fifth grade transition process and adjust based on feedback from parents, teachers and students. You'll recall, last year, as we developed this goal, our action step was to survey our fourth, well, then current fifth grade parents about the transition process. We were coming off of the pandemic. There were a lot of opportunities for us to kind of change things with orientation, with getting to know the school and what have you. So we used that and we put in several different new things this year. And so at the beginning of this school year, we then did another survey to families based on those changes. And so now we have some idea of where we can continue to adjust for the future. Just a snippet of our KPIs for this goal, it's really at 90% for almost everything. So highly successful transition, 90% of students will participate in at least one activity, 90% of parents and families will view the videos. And then staff will report measurable improvements in practices and communication as evidenced by a percentage improvement and also comments. So as we take a look at our survey from this year, and keep in mind, as we gave our survey, we kind of are struggling with parent responses to the survey. So we had about 65, 70 responses, not a whole lot, out of about 380 kids. So the, these are kind of colored with that amount. And then our students, of course, all took the survey. And then it looked like there were some parents that may have taken the student survey rather than the parent survey. So we are, that's one thing that we need to do, a different job of kind of collecting that information. But for this year, at least 54% of parents attended at least one webinar or watched the videos. We had a lot of comments in there that were like, well, my older child went through, so I know kind of what to expect. 80% of families attended at least one High Crest hangout, which is a pretty good number for that new structure that we put into place. And then 79% of parents indicated a positive overall experience or a highly successful experience. With students, 60% of students said that they watched their video, the videos with their parents. 60% of students said that they attended at least one High Crest hangout, which is different from that 80% parent number. So that's, we need to dig into that a little bit. And 79% of students also, that's right in line with the parents, indicated a positive overall experience. And that little graph at the top is, the fours and fives is the 79%. So as we dug into the feedback, so we had feedback, open-ended feedback for each of the different structures and the structures included the videos, the webinars, the High Crest hangouts, which we had three of over the summer, and then orientation, which happened the Friday before the first day of school this year. And we had already changed the orientation structure to include teachers in that structure. It was about a half hour of time. Kids came in, they got to see where their homeroom was, they got to meet their teacher and they got locks to practice before, over the weekend before they came in on their first day. They also learned where their locker was, they dropped off school supplies. So that was a whole new structure for us, but the feedback that we had had before was about having more of a structure and having teachers there was key. So we wanted to make sure that happened. We had a lot of positive feedback around that orientation, also around the hangout, but some of the feedback said, you know, could we have a better structure of the hangouts? Could there be, it, it was kind of loosey-goosey, the way that we had the people come. And then we said, hey, come on in if you want a tour of the school. And some of the tours were different. So we're looking at improving that structure a little bit more. A little bit more notification for orientation this year. We were trying to decide what to do, so the date was not chosen until kind of midsummer. So we actually have that date or we will hopefully when the calendar is approved. So then we will be able to give that date right away. And then we had a lot of feedback that said more information about extracurricular activities, band, orchestra, choir and in the schedule. And so we have looked at our webinars and, and our videos and some of the information that we're giving during the, the High Crest hangouts to include more of that. One interesting thing that came up from a few people was the student buddy system and mentors. So having some sort of student involvement with fifth graders and fourth graders. And so we also, we had something prior to the pandemic that kind of fell away and so we're reigniting that this year. From the kids, again, they had similar feedback about extracurriculars, band, orchestra and choir and more information on the building layout. A lot of them just said, hey, can we get maps on the first day of school? Sure, that's easy, that's an easy fix. And, and of course, kids, you know, said, hey, you know, let everybody know that it's okay if we get to class late in those first days of school. And that's absolutely true, but maybe we don't express that enough. So some better communication with that. Both parents and students said, hey, these binders that we're using, which we implemented several years ago for executive functioning purposes, but they're really big binders and some of them don't even fit in the lockers. So they said, hey, can we, can we look at the use of the binders? And we've already taken a look at that with our fifth grade teachers and said, we can do the same thing, but with smaller binders. So that's on, on the docket for next year. And then from staff, we really focused on the orientation with staff and first week activities. And they said, you know, they were really, really appreciative of having that kind of first touch with their fifth graders prior to the school year starting. They said that was a really great setup. So we are looking to mirror that for this year with a few little logistical changes, better communication outside when they come and meet their classes. So kids have a better idea where to go, some maps that we can send out to parents. So everybody's a little bit more organized going in. And then again, they, we also talked to them about the organization with the holders, so the binders. So I've talked a little bit about these, but in specifically, we are including an overview of our input forms. If you have had a parent go through High Crest or the junior high, you know, we send out an input form to families prior to the school year, just to gather feedback from parents. So we're including that in our webinar on the structure of the school and the house and team structure, because we get a lot of feedback from parents about specific kids without understanding kind of how High Crest is made up. And so we are going to include that as a part of our overview, so people know how to complete those forms, so that it helps us and it also helps them. We are including more information about extracurriculars and instrumental music. Something that happened this year, leading into the school year, was we restructured how clubs are done. You'll remember with our SEL goals, we were trying to bring a lot of those clubs in-house. And now that we have a better idea of how that's working, we're able to better communicate that out to the kids and to the families as well. The buddy system, we're looking at partnering fourth grade classrooms, current fourth grade classrooms with current fifth grade classrooms and having kids, fifth graders develop a kind of a slideshow with some important information based on what they wanted to know and then share that with the fourth grade classes and do some question and answers. We'll be talking to our fifth grade teachers about the structure of that at our upcoming grade level meeting. Some placement changes that we are looking at too, is we got a lot of feedback, as we do every year, on, you know, we have four elementary schools and is it evenly dispersed? And we try to do our best with the dispersment of that. But looking at some things to try for the next year, do we group just by, do we narrow that down? Are there two elementary schools that we look at placing on a house or in a unique way so that there's more opportunity for kids to see familiar faces in that fifth grade year before it gets more mixed up in sixth grade, seventh grade and so on? And, and that goes right in line with some of our, the goal two, SEL goal is what is best for kids in that transition cycle with, with keeping some familiar faces, keeping some groups of kids together for that purpose of homeroom and what have you. Special education, and I didn't go into a lot of detail here, but some things to note. And, and first of all, I have to say that it's been a real game changer this year for High Crest and I think the junior high too, of having one dedicated coordinator at our school to really partner with the administrative team and really partner with the elementary schools on this transition process. Hannah Deutsch is our coordinator and she's been working really closely with Linda Morich and the elementary teams on this transition. and the elementary teams on this transition piece. And so there's been a lot of improved communication and further communication planned, specific targeted emails for parents of students with IEPs, invites to drop-ins. Last year, we did this drop-in structure where parents could drop in and just ask any questions that were personal questions about their own child or about programming. And those are more targeted now so that parents actually know that they're coming up right after their annual review date. Hannah Reid did the video that was shown to parents and is really encouraging parents at the elementary level to watch it, working with coordinators to make sure that the questions are addressed in that video that parents have and that they're being referred to that as these questions arise. And then we're doing some work to increase observations between fourth grade teachers and fifth grade teachers, specifically with academic strategies classes. I think as we've gone over time, we've made some changes at High Crest that our elementary people may not be as aware of. So as how those classes operate, what's done in those classes. So we really want to help everybody involved in that transition process understand kind of what the programming looks like and what can go on for those fifth graders. And then as we, I talked about binders and then our Hangout structure. As we look to do that kind of buddy system with fourth and fifth grade, we want to have a student transition team at fifth grade who then will be invited to come to our Hangouts and partner with our tour guides, who will be adults because it will be kind of a scripted tour. But we want to have the kids there to answer questions for anybody. Some next steps, we are working on another action step, which is our sixth to seventh grade transition planning. We sent surveys out for that and we're working on involving staff and students in that transition plan. Our kickoff webinar is scheduled for, for fifth to, fourth to fifth grade on the second. That involves our world language selection process. We will then share our fifth grade countdown, which has all of our calendar of events and will then direct parents to our videos and recordings of webinars and anything else important. And so then we look forward to updating you at the end of the year as well. Questions?
One question. This is excellent. Thank you very much. I was just looking at the participation with the surveys. Where were they communicated? Were they part of weekly newsletters or?
Yeah, so for students, we sent them out directly to homeroom teachers and asked home teachers to give them. That's why we get a really good response. And then we had a direct communication from Linda to fifth grade parents with the survey, just only as a standalone and then reiterated in weekly newsletters. I think what we want to do as we, specifically with the Hangouts and the webinars, is work with Tony and the team on, is there a way that we can do more counting on views? And also do some like logins or sign on the, sign on the sheet if you're attending our Hangout today, just so then we can get a more accurate count of who's attending and if you're, how many kids are there, how many parents are there, rather than the survey? Because clearly the survey may not have 100% participation.
Any questions?
Yeah, again, excellent work. Lots of detail here. I had one comment, whatever, on the extracurricular. One thing that I always, that I think about is some, some families are very involved in terms of they, they know what options are available for their kids, what, what that means for when they go to high school and potentially college. Some families are not. And one thing that, that could be with the extracurricular is that a student wouldn't know that by starting band in fifth grade that that opens up opportunities of someday and being in a marching band in college. And if their parents aren't involved like that, the kids, no one, no one can picture that far ahead. So there is a, there's a gap. I mean, there's certainly lots of parents in this community that are very, very involved. But there are also parents that are not. And certainly at the, you know, fourth grade going into the fifth grade, you have no idea what, what those implications are. So there, there might be some room for some, you know, explaining the opportunities of joining an extracurricular now and what that'll mean, you know, going forward. And maybe having like a high school student that's in band come in and talk about, you know, by, by starting in fifth grade, this was how much fun I had in high school and now I'm going to be in the marching band in college like my brother or whatever. And for various extracurriculars, that could bring it home more to a fourth grader. Because if the fourth grader says I want to be in band until their parents are in band. If the fourth grader says, I don't want to, I don't want to spend all that much time. I hate piano lessons. I'm not going to be in band. Because they, no one can picture what's for it. But something like that might be a good way of, of getting more participation and bridging the gap of the families that are heavily involved and the families that aren't.
Other questions or comments?
I have a comment. Thank you so much for taking this on. I think we've been on the board for a while. This was a big issue. So it's, it's definitely going in the right direction. It's not already there. Yeah, thank you so much. This is huge. And I have to say something about Frank's comment because I was a highly mediocre trombone player. So I, I got perfected out, you know? And had they had like a mediocre band, I definitely would have stuck with it. I don't know if that's something you guys can address.
How to make you a better?
No, 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 just kids, right? Because they're not, there's, you know, back up. So, so you alluded to it, right? There are all these parents who push and, and you're going to have a band full of lots of really good kids who just magically are grades, you know, in fourth or fifth grade. And then you might have some that are terrible. And, you know, it takes time to be good at that. I think that's part of what you're pointing.
Yeah, and, you know, understanding what it might be in the future. I mean, it's even that's hard for a fourth grader. But when you have no idea, you look at it and say, I'm going to spend an hour a day doing homework that I, you know, practicing the thing, what's the payoff? But a high school student, you know, that's involved in band or Science Olympiad or anything that, that's an extracurricular could be that excitement that gets someone more involved than it would have been otherwise.
Any other comments or questions? I do want to say the transition is seismic, right? Going from that little comfy, warm, fuzzy K4 to a big school. It's, I think the parents and the kids have a transition. So it's great that you're focused on that. In terms of strategy items, we have one more, the school calendar.
Yes, at the last meeting, we presented the big breaks and our calendar committee has continued to work. This meeting, we are presenting the final draft calendar, which will be recommended for approval at Monday's meeting. So we wanted to make sure to highlight that for you and receive any feedback or questions the board may have before it's recommended for formal approval. Dr. Glucki can speak to any specific dates that may be unique in this calendar. Anything in particular you want to highlight?
Okay.
So I, I think it looks great. My initial impression was that it's pretty similar to this year's structure. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, yes.
So your committee felt like these changes that we put in place were hopeful, the longer chunks of full weeks?
Absolutely. And I just so appreciate the opportunity to have a committee around this. Teacher voices, support staff voices, admin voices. It, to put all of the sticking points out there, right? All of the parameters that we're managing to try and build this calendar and to have every voice at the table is huge. We haven't lived this full calendar yet to know if this year is ideal. But we've lived it enough to know that we want to replicate what we changed for this school year.
I'll add, there is never a perfect calendar, having been through this for many, many, many years. There are always pros and cons to a calendar. And so it is important for people to realize that there's a certain number of student attendance days. We have the opportunity with our, our staff and with parent input to design how we think those days can be best utilized and maximized. But we consistently receive feedback, both for and against any proposal that comes forward. So I just kind of want to highlight that. A lot of people really loved the Thanksgiving break that was provided this year on the calendar. We received some feedback, especially from a couple of parents who did not appreciate the way that that was scheduled. And so the committee really did take into account all of that feedback and recognizes there is no perfect calendar. This one seemed to work out really well for, for many reasons and the educational outcomes of students. I will also note that the calendar makes for a little bit shorter summer break because of just the way things work within the calendar. When we take a couple more breaks or longer breaks than it, it makes for a little bit shorter summer. This summer in particular, it's noteworthy because the summer is a little bit shorter by just a couple of days. And we have some really significant projects thanks to the board's approval of the air conditioning projects to be accomplished this summer. So our buildings will be very, very busy this summer. And we will be working hard to ensure that everything is, is ready to go on that first day of school. But I just, I want to make a note of that. I think this is a really good reflection of what we think will work well for our schools in the upcoming school year.
I just have a quick question. Carrie, just from the, looking at the draft calendar, is November 20th, is school closed that day?
Yes.
Okay. Students are off?
Students are off. Thank you, yes.
Oh, okay. So there is, okay. It looks like it's a different color and I thought maybe it was significant.
It, it's a, it's, for parents, it's a, it's a day off of school. It is not a scheduled day. For teachers, because of the parent-teacher conferences that happen on Thursday and Friday, it kind of, it looks a little bit different in the calendar. But what's most important is to recognize it's a, it's a non-attendance day for students. I believe our district office is open on that day. So that's why it's coded just a little bit differently. But those gray days are non-attendance days for students.
Yeah, it looks purple to me. That's why I kind of brought it up. And I thought it was maybe significant in that sense. I'm probably wrong. Does it not look purple to anybody else?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Right. I actually have a related.
Maybe I'm looking at a different.
Maybe not.
Like black and white version.
Yeah, I mean, I totally get it. I just, it was probably meant to be gray or something. And I, I just thought it was significant.
I add to Bonnie's question. So did we, we used to synchronize with Nutria? Do I remember this?
We do synchronize with Nutria for the major breaks, meaning spring break, winter break. Start and end dates to the extent it's possible. It's not always possible because semesters start and end a little bit differently.
Yeah.
I'll also note that two of our neighboring districts will be starting after Labor Day, starting school after Labor Day in the coming school year because of their significant construction projects that are happening this summer. And so that super late start doesn't coincide with, with what we'll be doing. But we coincide those major breaks with Nutria Township. And, and across the township, we're all the same in that regard. It's the start and end of the school year that sometimes looks a little different.
I, I was referring to Thanksgiving.
Oh.
We should have like a flashing red light because I think Nutria is not off.
Nutria is not off, right? They have a different fall break.
Yeah.
So it.
I was told.
Yeah.
Why are you here?
Yes.
All right. So the point is it's not an exact overlap, but where they're standing.
Yeah, I got you. Okay.
Lani, did you get your question answered? I feel like you didn't.
Not really. Dr. Glucki, that, that 20th day, what is?
They're off the whole week.
Yes.
But the teachers go to school the Monday for Institute.
They don't. That, that is a swap day for the evening conferences. It's a, what, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the actual official word.
It is a swap day. Yeah, it is in exchange for the time given for the two evening parent-teacher conferences. That has been in practice for probably a decade. Okay, great.
I think to her, I had a similar question, I guess, to Bonnie's. It's, it's a purple without dots, which is in the key in the bottom. So, you know, depending on the audience, but if it's a parent audience, making it more clear that students aren't in school.
We can, we can do that in terms of what is put out there publicly for, for families. So they understand that. It is not a change in practice. So it might be coded, the way it's coded might look different this morning, but the practice is continuing as it has been. And families will feel a difference in the relationship.
Yeah.
But thank you for pointing out the color coding. We'll make sure to adjust that before Monday so that it looks more consistent. The version that I see online, just it all looks gray. But I see what you're saying in the print version. It just, it's like a slightly different shade. And so I see where the question is coming from. So thank you for that.
Make it purple dotted or gray, but right now it's neither, so.
Yeah, this is, and this is a document we create, so we can, we can adjust that.
Do a narrative for families.
I had to follow up to John's question about Nutria. I know there is some discussion by Nutria of permanently going to a different schedule, like after Labor Day and having a different fall semester. I mean, I thought you had them brought up in here.
So we coordinate with Nutria on what their calendar looks like. They publish their calendar usually way ahead of us and then we use their calendar to build ours out. The discussion, as I understand it, at Nutria centers around whether or not that first semester can just remain a shortened semester, which is like what they did this year. Their first semester is actually shorter in days than their second semester. And that is to allow them to complete finals and that first semester before winter break, which is something new for Nutria. So that's their discussion that they're having. That is more about how they structure their semester ends and their finals schedule than the, the calendar as the community feels. It, it's really about teaching and learning and how they organize themselves around the semesters.
I understand for this year and that it's not an issue. But given that you have a committee, if Nutria is starting to think about changing their start date after Labor Day, you know, we should have input to that. I mean, whatever our schools and our committee and our community thinks is better. Some people may like to start after Labor Day, some may not. But you have a committee still using that proactively with Nutria. They're looking at changing it to make sure that your input is early enough to be recognized by them.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Okay, I think this concludes strategy.
Hi, terrific. So this is an opportunity for the public to address the board, but I do not see anyone here in attendance. So we will move to old business. Is there any old business?
I have one note. The Sustainability Coordinator, which is a village hired position coming out of the Cooperative Intergovernmental Committee that Bonnie and John serve. They've developed the intergovernmental agreement to support that position. It is currently being reviewed by various sets of attorneys. The board will remember, we pick up just a small portion of that liaison. It's approximately 5% for a handful of days throughout the year and some liaisonship between all of the government committees. So once that comes back, we will be asking the board to approve that intergovernmental agreement. I mention it here today because it may be that it's ready to go and be recommended to the board for approval on Monday. If not, then it will come in Feb, in the next month.
I add on, in a related way, I don't know if you all saw, Go Green had a Go Green Schools, half a day, a webinar. And it was from schools all across Illinois. So I participated in that and took lots of notes. It was incredibly well.
It was incredibly well done, and they had representatives from five or six different organizations sharing work that's being done in schools all around the state. So it was really impressive and good ideas. Very cool. So happy to share any resources if people are interested. Any new business? So at this point, I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I move to adjourn to executive session to discuss collective bargaining and employment issues.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the rule?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Frank Van Zeeck?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider Paves?
Yes.
Amy Paley?
Yes. Okay, motion carried.